Call the meeting to order, Resolution 172. Meeting called to order by Larry Maltreke at six o'clock. Attendees, all of councilors absent with notice is colonizer of the foreman. Mover and seconder? Gary and Leanne, all in favor? Carried. Approval of the agenda? Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes. That would be a policy that we were talking about. The new first reading of the whole for single employee, the one to yes. That would be a bylaw, wouldn't it?
It's the organization bylaw. Council had requested an in-camera discussion of that. And then after that, if they wish to make an agenda item, we could add that to the agenda. So it's not in there right now because that discussion hasn't occurred yet. But basically, we could add it on to the agenda at that time. Yeah, or we can do it now if you wish.
What would you prefer?
As long as we can add anything.
Any point in time. So after in cat will be able to add it yet.
With Resolution 173, be resolved at the meeting. Agenda for the regular council meeting on May 6, 2025 be accepted as presented. Mover and seconder? Derek, seconded by? Kent, all in favor? Carried. Resolution to approve the previous meeting minutes. Everyone had his chance to flick it over. Everything's good. Read Resolution 174. Be resolved at the meeting minutes of a regular meeting of council on April 17, 2025 be accepted as presented. Mover and a seconder? Clint, seconded by Kent, all in favor? Carried. Delegations, there are none. Number five, Protective Services, RCMP crime report.
Fairly consistent every month I see at the bottom of the call, yeah?
Yeah, and yet we're over double on damaged property. So something's going down, obviously.
We had a citizen tax report. I guess maybe next meeting we should be due for one.
We were supposed to get one, but we have not yet received it. So at this stage, let's be adding the next meeting and need a bit more.
Okay, I was just wondering if they could maybe add or get some more insight into what we're seeing here in some categories.
Typically, we try to keep them together like back to back.
No, that's fine.
Thanks.
Any questions or concerns regarding the report? I'll read the Resolution 175. Be resolved at the April 2025, municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman and Swan Valley Region RCMP crime statistics report be accepted as presented. Mover and a seconder? Gary, seconded by Leanne, all in favor? Carried. Number seven, Finance. Accounts payable.
Can I come in and look things over? If there's any questions on any particular thing, I'd be happy to answer. The big one for the check 13947, that's our annual insurance. That's quite a large number. Yeah, that's our insurance for buildings, equipment, et cetera.
I think the big trouble one there maybe.
Oh, should be to 26. April 1st of this year to April 1st of 26, I believe.
That's your view on that?
Just in the memo for that.
In the memo? Okay, yeah, I'll get a little bit of that.
Um, just a quick question. Bell MTS proposal. Am it so high or is that?
There's office phone and the fire department internet and the office internet. The office internet is fairly high. Your 13949 check?
Yeah, or 48, 13948.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right above it.
I'd have to pull that one and take a look at it again.
Did you check numbers out again?
13948, right? Yeah.
I just thought it was high compared to what Minnetonka says. Only the office is open all the time.
Oh, would that be the log rate as well? A 4E? Yeah, because that's the same building. 13948.
13948. Fire department internet and office internet, right? Minnetonka's office.
So it's the water treatment plant. It's the Bozeman library telephone. And then phone internet, probably for both, the library and the office. And then just GST. That's the breakdown in the voucher. We are only opening the office one day a week. But we do, that entire time we're VPNing and our remote desktop serving into the office. Like we're start of the day to the end of the day, we're always online. But the, let's see. Yeah, the internet, the two internets are high. And then the library one, we do have the router, wireless router for people. Not just like, it's a service we have there. So it depends on attendees and similar to Minnetonka. So people will pull up outside the building and just use the internet from outside too. That could be part of it as well.
It will be, I just want to check the check after that. It says on their Bozeman office library as part of that Bell MTS bill.
Okay, that was check number 13949?
Yeah.
It could be. You take this as a takeaway if you'd like and we can look into it.
No, I just thought it was kind of high for Bozeman. I could see if it was all of us combined.
You're fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make those. Didn't want to cut you off.
Just keep an eye on it for the next one, just to see what.
Yeah.
Yeah, 13960 for $3,800. Just maybe Clint, you were here for this one last year. That's our annual order for our shulteemor, all the lines and blades and stuff. That's a year's supply there. Anything else here that I should maybe? 13987, that was spring work approved by Colin and monitored by Colin. He did sign the invoice from that particular person. So I know we have working quite a bit out in the Bozeman area there. So I knew the bill would be smoke, smoky when they did all the cleaning. So I kind of maybe touched on some of the bigger ones. But if there's anything that comes to mind, just shout it out and we'll try and answer.
The three for the receiver general, what would they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Source deductions for two months there. 13973, 13974. And the 13975 was a bit of interest it looks like there.
No other questions? I'll read the Resolution 176. Be resolved at the accounts payable checks 13936 to 13995, an amount of $261,816.40 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and seconder? Derek, seconded by Gary, all in favor? Carried. 7.1.2. Payment of payroll, pay period number eight. Any comments or concerns? Here we go, now we'll read Resolution 177. Be resolved at the payroll 08, 2025 for the period from March 29th to April 11, 2025, the amount of $27,403.70 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and a seconder? Moved by Leanne, seconded by Gail, all in favor? Carried. 7.2, payment of council payroll, pay period 04. Any questions? I'll read Resolution 178. Be resolved at the council payroll 04, 2025 for the period from April 1st to the 30th, 2025, and an amount of $11,520.12 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover and a seconder? Moved by Gary, seconded by Clint, all in favor? Carried. 7.3, vacation leave policy implementation expense. Gary?
I'm wondering if we can skip over this one until we have our in-camera discussion perhaps.
Okay, we can do that. Everyone's good with that?
Yeah.
I'll move to 7.4, municipality credit card access permissions.
This added item is just to increase the number of employees that have access to online inquiry for our credit cards from one to two, which will basically help spread the load as far as reconciliation work. Making sure we get caught up in getting it done in a timely basis. I think it's a good idea just to have more than just one person with access to it.
Gary?
Then another question regarding the credit card. Is our limit big enough on that card for our needs?
It is if we make regular payments on a monthly basis. We've never had a problem before. We can apply for more, but at this stage, I don't think we've ever really incurred a period where I think our insurance was $9,000 and change. I think our gravel quarry permit returns were about $6,500. So those are our big ticket items. Anything more? Like I don't think we've ever really encountered over 10, but if council wishes, we could request 15 or go to 20.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I noticed like the rooms in the city weren't on our credit card.
Nope, they were not.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, is the limit, was the limit not big enough or?
No, we are still going through the results of the mail strike and the results of the other person having access to the credit card resigning. And with only one person and having those statements missing, we just needed to we need more people working on that part of the reconciliation.
Okay.
Well, good. I'll read Resolution 179. Be resolved at the council, municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman approve an additional $3,382.13 of non-budgeted 2025. I'm sorry. I shouldn't move the Resolution 2.
Went forward, yeah.
Resolution 180. Be resolved at the manager, finance and accounting be issued inquiry, owning access permission to municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman credit card account. Mover and a seconder? Gary, seconded by? Derek, all in favor? Carried. Administration 8.1, Swan Valley Planning District Development Plan.
So council members, as you're aware, this one's just bad for further review. What we're looking for is just an approval decision. And if there's going to be a letter sent to the Swan Valley Planning District, what that content, that letter would be like, looking like as far as what to be asked in the letter.
I haven't personally talked to one person who wants to see these changes. So I would like to see it stay the way that it is. The way I understand it from all the digging that I've done, if somebody comes to town and wants to build something, we can do the rezoning then. So that's my thought process.
Gail?
I don't know, I just kind of looked at it as if it wasn't broken or anything. It was working good all these years for the 20 some years that never got changed. So I was okay with it staying the same.
Clint?
I am okay with it staying the same. I went to Bozeman and drove around the outskirts of Bozeman. Almost 300 acres of farm land were proposed to go into this. Now it's farmland, that's not into primary community. 150 some in Minnetonka, which I'm not for that. I'm saying it's been good for 22 years or whatever it was. There's been no problems that I know of in 22 years. It can be changed from my understanding anytime, anywhere. The one thing that I am in agreement with is the suggestion from the government or was the 300 animal unit limit for farmers on the outskirts within the mile, which would be three farmers right now would be affected by lowering that number. So I'm for the 300 animal units for those farmers.
Yeah.
Derek?
I think we want to leave it the same. Everybody seems to not want to change it now that I talk to people around here. So they don't want change. Basically, if we have to, then we can basically leave it as it is, I guess.
Leanne?
I'm okay with leaving it the same.
Gary?
Yeah, I've talked to two individuals and they indicated that they'd like it left as is. Mainly in the west side of town where they do have little hobby farms, if you want to call them that. And the changes at one point or other, particularly when they maybe sell their properties could be a big deterrent from buyers buying them. So I'm kind of, or I am in favor of just leaving it and looking at any thing that wants to come into the area on a case-by-case basis as we have in the past and reviewing it. And I don't think we've ever once declined approval on anything. Usually made it suit the municipality and the person. So I'm good with leaving it.
Okay. In hearing all that, I'll read the resolution then. But how do we incorporate what everyone is in agreement of with AMU increase? How do we incorporate that into?
I was going to bring my notes with a bit of a write-up, but I scrambled to get here today and I just got myself here, not my notes. So I did have something wrote up at home in effect to what I said. That could be forwarded on to the agency then, Trevor?
Yep. If you, we could actually send submissions directly from council or we can put them into a letter, whatever council. However, you guys want to proceed.
I was going to bring them and then I was with hopes that they could be an email to them or however we're going to do it with the reasoning why we're not wanting change. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I'll read the resolution then. 181, be resolved at municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman, improve the draft Swan Valley Development Plan, January 2025. Mover and a seconder? Gary, seconded by? Leanne. All in favor? Those opposed? Resolution defeated. We're only going to go into camera once. Can I move it up before we get into all these other places that I could? Otherwise, we can't pass resolutions while we come up?
We can, so as we kind of discussed at the start of the meeting, if you guys want to add resolutions afterwards, you can. Basically, it has to be a majority vote. Basically, we can add whatever resolutions you wish. Do you go with camera now? But you also have your financial plan and the tax levy bylaw, which you may want to get done prior to.
Yes, we can go, we can move into camera now?
I'd like, I'd like to deal with the pass or vote on the financial plan, is what I want to say.
Yeah, and just the other one that follows it is the tax levy bylaw. So when we submit this, the financial plan has to go to Ministry of Municipal Relations and North Affairs for their review. They just go through a validation, but they've already just seen it informally a couple of times already because I've shared it with them. Let's be glad questions. The bylaw then has the mill rates that basically were in the financial plan, but in a bylaw. So at the end of the day, what we'll have is we'll approve the financial plan if it's a successful vote after the third reading. We'll then have the bylaw, the tax levy bylaw come to the next meeting for second and third reading. If we go through a vote, the financial plan will be appendix A to the actual bylaw. And then if it's, we're now, we're good, we can actually start spending on capital expenditures. Because we've been doing operating expenditures through our preliminary budget, but the capital expenditures, we've had a few that we juggle, but basically we need to have the budget approved prior to be able to invest in our larger capital expenditures.
Good. I'll read Resolution 182. Be resolved at bylaw 10, 2025, being a bylaw regarding the 2025 financial plan be given second reading. Mover and a seconder? Leanne, seconded by Derek. All in favor? Carried. Resolution 183. For third reading. Be resolved at bylaw 10, 2025, being a bylaw regarding the 2025 financial plan be given third reading. If you recorded vote. As far as Counselor Wagner, would she be allowed to vote because she wasn't at the meeting?
Yeah, with Gail not being at the actual public hearing, you're ineligible to vote for the actual financial plan. So it's not a declined or it's not a vote against, even if there's no decline. So now basically we are a group of six voting and what we require is still four votes to approve the budget.
I need a mover and a seconder for that resolution. Gary, seconded by Leanne, all in favor? Carried. I'll I'll read out members. Larry Maltreke, Reeve, yes. Gary Bartel, Deputy Reeve?
Yes.
Derek Bartel?
Yes.
Clint Jensen?
Yes.
Leanne Hutman? Ken Reader?
Yes.
Carried. Tax levy bylaw?
Yeah, that's it right there. Yeah, that's the one.
I'll read Resolution 184. Be resolved at bylaw 02, 2025, being a bylaw regarding the 2025 tax levy be given first reading. Mover and a seconder? Derek, seconded by? Gary, all in favor? Carried. That'll take us to the in-camera portion then. I'll read Resolution 185. Be resolved at pursuant to section 1523, excuse me, of the municipal act, despite subsections one and two, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting, continue discussion in camera regarding employee, land, legal and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public would prejudice the municipality of Minnetonka's Bozeman's ability to carry out the activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section 831D, council members shall keep in confidence of matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection 1523 till a matter discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section 941H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause 831D. The time is 6:30, am I correct?
6:28.
6:28. I need a mover and a seconder for the, Leanne, seconded by? Gary, all in favor? Carried. Resolution 186. Be resolved at pursuant to section 1524 of municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at? Does the time?
We are 8:5, 8:59.
8:59. Moved by? Leanne, seconded by Gary, all in favor? Carried. Resolution 186? To go into overtime?
I know you're at, you were out of camera at 186. And yeah, so these are the, sorry, these 186 is the out of the camera and then we're going to go to overtime. And then 189 is in camera.
Yeah, 188 is overtime. Because we're out of camera now on 186. Yeah, 188 is overtime, because we're out of camera now on 186.
Yeah, okay, so you're at 188?
Yep.
Excellent, okay, so that's the overtime.
Resolution 188, be resolved that the May 6, 2025, regular meeting, council go into overtime. Mover and the seconder? Derek, Clint, all in favor? Carried. Resolution 189, to move into camera again. Be resolved that pursuant to section 1523 of municipal act, despite subsection one and two, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public would prejudice the municipality Minnetonka Bozeman's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section 83-1D, council members shall keep in confidence of matter discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection 1523 until a matter discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section 94-1H, a council member becomes disqualified for breach in the requirement of confidentiality under clause 83-1D. And the time being?
9:01.
9:01. Mover and the seconder. Gary, seconded by Gail, all in favor? Carried. Resolution 190. Be resolved that pursuant to section 1524 of municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at?
9:50.
9:50. Moved by Gary, seconded by Leanne, all in favor? Carried. All right, going back to our agenda, we'll move to resolution 179. I'll read the resolution. Be resolved that the council, municipality Minnetonka Bozeman, approve an additional $3,382.13 of non-budgeted 2025 employee vacation leave expense to facilitate the January 1st, 2025, implementation of policy 2025-02 vacation leave.
Just still checking on the background, December 20th to 31st, is it 2024?
So you're on the, the approval item?
Yeah.
Okay, one second. So which bullet are you on?
Third bullet, under background.
Background, from December 20th to 31st. Yeah, that's right. So December 20th to 31st. So what we're doing with this is, our payroll period ended December 20th, but the calendar year ended December 31st, so we have 11 days, we're basically, we're taking the accrual of that period, and basically, that's the expense period of recovery.
That would have been 2024, correct?
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
You're right, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's, just want to make sure the year was.
Absolutely. I will revise the information item, approval item, thank you, but the resolution, I think, still stands. Let me just do a quick review.
Yeah, I don't think if anything was.
Give me two seconds. Yeah, the resolution still stands. So I'll revise the approval item.
Do you want me to read the resolution again? 35, time you need a mover and a seconder. Ken, seconded by Derek, all in favor? Carried. Resolution 191. Be resolved that bylaw 03, 2025, being a bylaw regarding organizational and administrative structure be given first reading. Mover and the seconder. Ken, seconded by Clint, all in favor? Carried. Um, that did, that's all for our agenda. We'll move into adjournment, resolution 187. Be resolved that this regular meeting of council be adjourned at?
9:53.
9:56, 3? Moved by Leanne, seconded by Gail, all in favor? Carried. Meeting adjourned.